President of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
We have a quorum? Do we do? Do we have a report on action taken in closed session?
There was no reportable action taken in closed session today, Mr. President. But I did want to just extend our sympathies to trustee Gonzalez Yan, who isn't with us today. He's out ill.
Thank you. Is there a move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Is there discussion, any changes to the agenda? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? Yeses? Chancellor?
I'm sorry, I know you're not pulling anything, but there is a resolution on the agenda this evening. We may like to speak to that. I would suggest that it be pulled. Can we do that? No?
Yes, we certainly can. This is the resolution.
Well, there's a resolution on the agenda this evening that we may want to emphasize.
Mr. President, I'd like to pull, I guess, Agenda item number nine for the board's consideration as an action item.
All right. Have that, item number nine, which is consider approval of a resolution supporting Oakland Vegetarian Week. Thank you.
There are no further changes, and we've already voted approval, so let's proceed to comments from the public. Are there comments?
We have a few speakers this evening, Mr. President, communications from the public. We have three speakers, members from the public. We have Molly Seeland, followed by Matthew Lanza, and then June Ann Cook. And we do have a public speaker on item number two, the Sunshine Proposal with SEIU 1021. Your name, please.
Molly Seeland. I'm the Classified Senate President at Merrick College. I'm also a senator on the Peralta Classified Senate. And I wanted to take a minute to thank Chancellor Ortiz, the college presidents, Vice Chancellor Gerhart, and Tue for coming to our event, Classified Matters, on March 27th. It was very well received by the classified ranks. Hadn't happened in a long time. The workshops were well attended. We are very encouraged to produce more of these workshops, especially in line with accreditation standards for human resource development. So, we look forward to more participation from the presidents and the chancellor. And thank you for encouraging us to be better at our jobs.
Thank you, Ms. Seeland. The next speaker is Matthew Lanza. Still on? Okay, good. Good evening, members of the board, Chancellor Ortiz, vice chancellors, presidents, and associated staff. I'm Matt Lanza, the SEIU 10 to 1 field representative. And in the vein of what Molly just spoke to, classified matters, I'm here to renew the call from SEIU 10 to 1, sort of in this broad discussion that we're hoping to continue and broaden and further about classified staffing levels here at Peralta Community College District. It's that wonderful budget formation time of the year when all of my compatriots in business services in the districts I served are pulling their hair out, or have done so already, or are just incredibly frustrated and overburdened. That was not a slide, I apologize. And so, in that vein, that we're looking at budgets and formulating budgets for the next fiscal year, I'd like to reiterate, you know, the theme of March 27th, which I was unable to attend, but I heard from many of the 150-plus classified members or classified employees who attended and were just effusive in their praise of it, that we really take a look at as a district. You know, we've discussed, you know, administrative levels, and you've heard James speak on this, you've heard me speak on this as well, but also looking at student success and the correlation and what we have found to be a direct correlation between classified staffing levels and student success as not in a means of sort of displacing or undermining the work that administrators do and faculty do in obviously creating and sustaining student success, but that classified are just as crucial in that manner. Whether it's working on IT problems at the colleges to make sure that the students have Internet or access to the various programs they use, whether it's making sure the bathrooms are clean or that there isn't mold growing in parts of the campuses. It's imperative, and we're calling on the board and staff to look at student success ratios to classified staffing ratios and see that this is a manner, this is a place where Peralta can continue to make strides. We are in sort of a new dawn here in this district in terms of our leadership and in terms of our economic footing in a situation we haven't been in in quite some time. No longer, we're going into negotiations, and we're not looking at fighting off furloughs and layoffs for the first time in a long time. It's quite exciting for the union rep and me. And my hope is that the district can recognize and remedy that these deficiencies in classified staffing levels, the negative effect that they have on the quality of student education, and we can work to rectify that and remedy that. Again, we've talked about staffing numbers. And about a month ago when I spoke, I handed a bunch of documents to everybody, and I'm sure everyone took them home and read them fervently. But the classified staffing numbers here in Peralta is about 28 percent of the FTE, and the statewide average is about 35. Some places, Los Rios Community College District, which has four campuses like ours, 35 percent. So, we're hoping to prove- Could you just wrap up, Mr. Lanza? Yes, I'm sorry. That through this analysis that we hope the board and the district does, that as we increase our staffing levels, you'll see student success skyrocket. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is June Ann Cook.
Hello, I'm one of those older students, but young at heart. Lady President, I'm a member of the American Association of University Women of Havre Castro Valley. I travel from Castro Valley to Berkeley City College to Laney College. Right now, I would like to actually praise one class that I'm taking right now at Laney College, and it is Human Values and Ethics. I love the class. I got a chance to email and talk to my uncle, Dr. Harold D. Fuller, about being my role model in my family. And as I talked to him, I told him, you know, being an older student, I'm a little disappointed because I'm mentoring someone younger. Her name is Malaysia Owen. She's president over the Black Student Union at Berkeley BCC. And as this young lady tried to be a leader at ASBCC, she's been under a lot of stress. As we finally actually get the funds that we put together at Black Student Union Day, I think it was March 5th, got a lot of runaround. Her dad had to pick up the check and get permission from his daughter. I just thought that after talking to Malaysia and letting her know, this is a young girl I've been mentoring since she's been 10 years old, she's now 19, and she goes to Berkeley City College and Laney College. She's doing just fine. But I just think the runaround of political administration, politics, as well as the ASBCC politics is so unnecessary. I majored in international relations at San Francisco State in, I believe, '82. I had my master's from John F. Kennedy University in 2005 in sports psychology. I'm a filmmaker and photographer now, and that's why I'm going to Peralta College. I do want to say that I enjoy my education in Peralta College, but I do would like to see a change in the unnecessary politics. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more speakers from the public, but we do have a speaker on item number two, which is the SEIU sunshining of their-
Yes, before we do that, let me backtrack and ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? We'll proceed now to a public hearing. There's no gavel, but I see, and so we'll just say I'm gaveling in. Yes. Gaveling in a public hearing on sunshining of the initial proposal for contract reopeners for SEIU Local 1021 to the Peralta Community College District. And I believe Vice Chancellor Alargent, this is your-
Thank you. The reopener proposals for negotiation with SEIU 1021 and a separate proposal by the district with SEIU 1021 with sunshine at the last board meeting. And this item is on the agenda today to comply with the government code requiring public comment opportunity.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
Did, I'm sorry, do we open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't hear the gavel, so.
I gave it.
Just kidding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, we have a speaker on this item, Matt Lanza, for this item number two, please.
All right, thank you.
I'm back. So, the purpose of my speaking on our sunshine is not necessarily to speak on the substance of the sunshine so much as a request and, I guess, a general statement as we go into bargaining. We have reopeners on wages and benefits, which are huge issues for our membership. As everyone knows, health benefits rates continue to skyrocket as these health insurance companies continue to increase their rates almost double digits every year. At the same time, January 1, the Social Security payroll tax went back up, which even if it only, even only going up 2 percent, tends to negatively affect lower-wage workers in a much greater manner than it does higher-wage workers, and lower-wage workers being many of the folks I represent, not just here at Peralta, but all throughout the East Bay. And as I alluded to when I spoke before, we are in a significantly better economic situation as a state and as, you know, a public entity than we have been for years. And it's, in and of itself, it's a victory that I'm not dreading going to the bargaining table thinking about who we're going to be serving layoff notices to, or how many furloughs we're going to be taking. And the hope is that while there's still a long way to go for Peralta to reach a fiscal level where we are stable and able to withstand a lot of the craziness that can happen, that the shared sacrifice of the membership in SEIU 10 to 1 is taken into mind. And I have no doubts, no doubts, that Vice Chancellor Alargent has that in mind as we go to the table. As I'm sure she would say, we have a very good working relationship in terms of working together on negotiable issues. And my hope is that that percolates up as well as down, and that, you know, as gas prices continue to rise, as many of our members' property taxes increase in part because of the parcel tax that our members helped to pass. As I mentioned, the payroll tax increasing as well, the Prop 30 taxes, which only really apply in the sales taxing instance, but again, those taxes tend to affect lower-wage workers greater than they do higher-wage workers as a proportion of their income, that the shared sacrifice over the years, the furloughs, the layoffs are kept at the forefront of the district's mind as we enter negotiations. And I look forward to hopefully an amicable and relatively short negotiation session this year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there further speakers?
No other speaker cards, Mr. President.
Then at this point, it would be appropriate to close the session? And so, the session is gavelled to a close? Thank you, Abell. Maybe a little more vigor, but it'll do. Now, we move to reports, and we'll hear from the associated student government representatives.
Okay. Hello, I'm Ethan Creasy. I am the ASBCC student body president. I'm happy to inform you that we've been meeting consistently, and we've sponsored many events, including Persian Celebration, kickoff for Raise the Wage, this, today, actually. We posted mini hikes for our hiking club and a series of movie nights. We will be hosting an Earth Week event, a showing of a fear screen fire, which is actually being sponsored and developed by our AS. We will have a guest speaker event for the African-American Culture Club. Along with, recently, we've successfully worked with our administration on getting more outlets in our LRC so that students have greater access to actually bringing their computers there. And we're working towards establishing scholarships for our students and/or out of the AS. And we also have assembled an eight-person team that we're going to be sending to the SSC-C convention later on in April. We're excited about that. And we've paved the way for the new AS by writing and getting approved a new constitution for us to put on the ballot for the spring election, along with, we've scheduled the debates for our, the spring elections for the new AS coming in. And we are preparing a leadership retreat for, once they get elected, we will help teach them some of the responsibilities that they will be having in the next coming year.
Thank you. Are there further speakers? There being none, we'll move to reports from the chancellor.
Thank you very much, President Galasa. I just briefly, since our last meeting, wanted to share with the trustees and our audience that on April 1st and 2nd, we had our scheduled follow-up meeting by the Accreditation Commission. We were graced with the presence of four visiting teams, one for each college. The teams spent Monday afternoon here at the district interviewing several of our staff, including myself and including Vice President Guiyang from the Board of Trustees. And of course, their job is to come in and validate the progress reports that were submitted by the colleges on March 15th. On Tuesday the 2nd, the visiting teams went out to each individual college where they provided similar activities with the college president and the college administration, constituency leaders, et cetera, again, in an effort to validate the reports. The exit interview that I was privileged to have with those visiting teams, in my estimation, were very positive, a positive experience, not only with the district and the three recommendations that pertain to the district, but also with each of the colleges and the recommendation that each college had to respond to. Of course, now the reports from these visiting teams will go to the commission, which they will then consider in their June meeting. They meet twice a year, in June, around June 6th and 7th. I'm not exactly sure what date this year, but they will meet in June and then make a final assessment as to the accreditation status of our colleges. And that should be available to us, if not the end of June, certainly by early July. Also, it's been mentioned by our representatives from 1021 that we had actually a staff development day for classified staff on March 27th. That was a staff development day for college-wide staff. And as Matt has mentioned, the turnout, we thought, was great with regards to the classified staff. And my hats are off, my hats off to the union leadership, but also to the classified senate leadership, particularly James Blake, who worked very hard in getting that to happen. And since our last meeting, I've also had an opportunity to meet with superintendent of schools at Alameda County, Sheila Jordan, where she and I discuss the partnership that we want to pursue with regards to Proposition 39. You may recall Proposition 39 is that sustainable energy, an energy efficiency proposition that was voted on in November, and talking about how we are encouraging the governor to create a training component to Proposition 39 that will help not only develop a workforce that's going to be used to retrofit some of the facilities, particularly in our educational institutions, K-14. And then finally, I want to, I want to recognize the district-wide student, not a student government, a student council that has been meeting with me on a regular basis. We're trying to meet every month. We just met last week. And maybe trustee Clegg or Cervantes have some comments, but I just want to share with the board that it's a very positive experience for me. It's an opportunity for me to hear from students what their issues are and what their concerns. And also, it's an opportunity for me to be transparent with students, which is what I think is very important, that we set as a Peralta culture, where we are not afraid to speak truth to power and to share and be respectful of each other. And what we're trying to do, which is to create a positive experience, a positive teaching and learning experience for our students at all four colleges. And I am grateful for the opportunity to meet with students. With that, that's my report, but it's an opportunity to launch into a college report from the College of Alameda, who has an aviation program, and that they are going to be pursuing a grant. And I'll ask Dr. Jackson to provide a synopsis on what that grant will be.
Thank you, Chancellor. College of Alameda has the opportunity to apply for a grant. It's under the State of California, the California Community Colleges. And what they're calling it is Doing What Matters for Jobs and the Economy. So, our new chancellor of the system is really looking at economic development. And as part of this grant, the intent is to target investment in emergent technologies. And there have been 10 technologies that have been defined under the grant rubric. One of the ones that we're looking at applying for is in global trade and logistics. That's one of the sectors, and it aligns with our Atlas program, which is our Alameda Transportation and Logistics Academic Support Program. That grant ended in February this year. So, this will pick up where that grant ends. And one of the key points is that we would be what they call a deputy sector navigator. That's the new terminology that's being used in workforce development, which means that there will be a sector navigator for our region, and we would be one of those subgroups. Transportation and logistics on the global side would be one of those subgroups. And we would get, if we are successful, about $300,000. And that would begin for one year, July 13th of this year until, excuse me, July 9th of this year until July 30th of next year. So, we are anticipating being successful. There is no other individual within our region that is applying for that. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we will be successful in getting that grant.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. And that concludes the chancellor's reports this evening. You may have an opportunity to look in your Dropbox for the college reports. And with that, I'll turn it over to President Galasa.
Thank you. And with that, I'll call on the board of trustees for their regular reports. And trustee Withrow will begin over there, is going to pass, and trustee Cervantes.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the chancellor for meeting with us last week with the Peralta Student Council. The two main topics that we talked about is communications in the district and then our advisor position. The students spoke earlier about some of the frustrations. I know if we, there were four advisors at all four schools, some of those frustrations would not occur. And the next meeting will be held at April 18th at the College of Alameda from 3:00 to 5:00. And then also, I'd like to report that elections are taking place, May 6th and 7th. Don't quote me on that. So, all the student governments are preparing for elections. And then also, all four schools this semester will be going to the SSC-C conference. And that's the first time I remember in a long time that all four schools will be attending this. And then also, both student trustees. That's it.
Trustee again.
Just briefly, Mr. President, I have been involved in the course of the last several months, just conversations, the community have talked about this before. I think trustee Cervantes talked about this at some point, about the fact that many of our community members, many of our students have been involved with, or been involved with the tragic shootings here in Oakland. And I'm really hoping that here at Peralta, we can take a leadership role in trying to address this issue. Obviously, we very much care about the health and safety of our students, but in talking with church leaders, talking with Oakland police officials, there's a need for us to figure out how to strengthen the pipeline between our students, particularly the Administration of Justice program and the Administration of Justice program in filling the police academies, for example. There's a big need to try to service, or try to make sure that Oakland residents and residents from our Community College District actually apply for those police academies and go into those professions that protect our community. I've talked to Bishop Bob Jackson about this, folks from OPOA, other individuals. And I'm really hoping that at Merrick College, maybe if other trustees are interested, have a discussion about what we currently do and how we currently partner with the other police academies in our service area to fulfill that purpose. I know we have a great program, and maybe this is a conversation that we might be able to retain, maybe a written report, if not a discussion, at the board level. Thank you.
Trustee ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an announcement, on next Thursday, not this coming Thursday, but Thursday, April 18th, 2013, at the Lake Merritt Breakfast Club, we'll be featuring our speaker that morning will be Chancellor Ortiz. And for those of you who would like to come, it's 7:30 a.m. in the morning. It is at, it's in the Lake Merritt Park area. It is the Garden Center, the Marshall Corp. through building, which he was a former Peralta trustee.
Is that right?
Yeah. So, we're looking forward to trustee Ortiz.
Chancellor.
What is it?
Trustee.
Trustee, you got a promotion, Chancellor.
Yes, thank you very much. I do appreciate that.
Lots, yes. Well, anyway, let me go over it again.
Chancellor Riley, yeah.
So, next Thursday the 18th at 7:30 at the Garden Center. Thank you, thank you.
And of course, we all know that the earlier you get up in the morning, the better person you become.
And you can have breakfast that early. Looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just want to say, I want to thank the chancellor for meeting with the district-wide council. And he has brought in a new beginning, and he is changing the culture of how the students have been interacting. And so, we do appreciate you coming out to speak with us and answering all our concerns and questions. And you do bring clarity, and we really like that about you coming to meet with us. I also want to thank Adella, who has been, has taken her job very seriously and has taken that position, and she's running with it. If the student has a question or issue, she takes care of it immediately, whether she's in a meeting or not. And the students want to say thank you for that, and they really appreciate you being here at Peralta. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Oh, I just want to say, her office is in the Administration of Records, just for the public, so you'll know where she- the public, so you'll know where she's located. Thank you.
Thank you, President Galasa. I'd like to just make an announcement and basically thank the chancellor and the staff for working on the outreach to area businesses. The chancellor has organized a seminar on how to do business with Peralta, which will be Thursday, April 11th, from 1:00 to 3:00. And that will be, let's see, what is, just give you the location, the Peralta District Boardroom. I think it's a wonderful thing that the chancellor's doing. I'm very proud of him and the staff to make sure that Peralta's outreach to local businesses is something that is well-attended and that it's an opportunity that we can make sure embraces our entire community so that the education and the job skills and the talent that comes out of this college district can cycle through the community in terms of economic empowerment for the people that live within the Peralta district. So thank you very much, Chancellor, trustee Ortiz.
And thank you. What was the time of that meeting again?
That is Thursday, April 11th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Peralta District Boardroom.
Thank you. And trustee Handi, you know, you're skipping. All right, now I'll just make a very quick comment. I wanted to thank the college presidents. We have them here tonight for their hard work in the, going through the accreditation drama, and for your hard work in putting together the reports, and to have a constructive and very positive, apparently from what the chancellor said, visit with the team. So thanks, and we're all looking forward to what happens in June, is that? Okay, thank you. Thanks again. I also would like to thank Mr. Lanza for his report. As a former negotiator, I can appreciate the feelings that you're experiencing right now with a positive confrontation is the wrong word, but a very positive meeting. Thanks. And that's it for trustee reports, and we move to district academic senate report. Dr. Van Putten.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, trustees, chancellor, district administrative center staff, college presidents, colleagues, and members of the public. One recurring theme in these reports to you is the changing expectations of potential employees in the emerging global marketplace. You've heard my comments about the increasing importance of computer literacy for student success, the need for curriculum redesign that fully embraces educational technology, the effect of automation and robotics on the prospect of full employment, and the realization that, quote, "Many of the new jobs require skills that job seekers do not have," end quote. Tonight, I will add one more factor to this evolving equation, the growing need for professionals with competency in languages other than English. Most recently, we've seen evidence of increased attention to this need amongst educators in the K-12 system and higher. For example, a recently published strategy paper from the Center for Digital Education entitled "Graduating Globally Competitive Workers: Language Learning Gives Students an Advantage in Today's Workforce." A link to the site where you can download this report will be included in the written version of this report. The report is based on a survey of over 100 leaders in K-12 and over 100 in higher education. These leaders were asked whether training in a second language and multiculturalism was needed to remain globally competitive. The report states, quote, "An overly resounding 97% of K-12 and 96% of higher education respondents agreed with the statement. Despite that almost universal agreement, at least among those respondents, we are aware that language learning in the United States has been on the decline for at least two decades, if not longer. In this nation of immigrants, it is estimated that approximately eight in 10 Americans speak only English. Contrast this with the fact that, quote, "200 million children in China are studying English, and every educated child in India learns English," end quote. Added together, those numbers are greater than the entire population of the United States. The most obvious implication of this disparity in multicultural language competency is reflected in a 2011 Forbes Insights survey finding that one in three American firms would be more likely to fill more or significantly more key positions with foreigners by 2013. At the same time, we're hearing more in the news about resistance to the use of H1 visas and the fear that foreign nationals are displacing American workers. That fear and resistance might be lessened by a greater awareness of the global need for workers to have multicultural language competency skills and the dire need for American schools to develop and expand effective language learning programs throughout the K-20 educational system. Fortunately, if we have the will, it is abundantly clear that advances in technology make it easier and more efficient to provide these programs. Of course, that requires infrastructure and sufficient mobile technology resources to support student learning anywhere and at any time. These needs will make increasing demands on our information technology systems and will require additional funding. There is much more that can be said and needs to be said about this topic. That will be saved for a future report, Part II and possibly Part III, yet to come. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you for your attention to these comments.
Thank you. And now we move to a presentation on open educational resources, abbreviated OER, and reducing student textbook costs. This has been something that the board has been interested in a long time. We've had several reports and attended several local meetings, and so we're looking forward to the presentation.
President Galasa, I'd like to introduce Vice Chancellor, Acting Vice Chancellor, interim Vice Chancellor, Michael Orkin, any of the above, who will present this item with faculty member Fabian Banga.
Greetings, board of trustees, members, colleagues, and community. So tonight, as was announced, we're going to talk about open educational resources, which is part of a broader picture that includes such things as open source software, which allows people to develop software and use applications without paying licensing fees. For example, at Peralta, our website platforms are done in WordPress, which is an open source platform. Our distance education operation is done using Moodle, which is an open source platform. And my colleague here, Dr. Fabian Banga, who's the chair of the Modern Languages Department at Berkeley City College, has been a pioneer at Peralta, not just in open educational resources, but in open source software. It's Fabian who led the charge to have Moodle be our open source platform and also helped me with our WordPress installations. And I think as a result of Fabian's work, we've, Peralta's saved a great deal of money and has made development of some of the communication tools that we use to communicate with the community and the public much more democratic and accessible to all members of the Peralta community. So I'm going to turn this over to Fabian, who is going to talk tonight about open source, about open educational resources, namely ways to have textbooks or online educational resources without having to pay enormous costs. So Fabian.
Hello. Well, I will prepare this very broad presentation, and I was thinking that I can talk for like 15 minutes, and then we can open it, and people can talk. Then we can all talk about these technologies. As Vice Chancellor Orkin said, open resources here at Peralta is nothing new. We are experimenting with these technologies for quite some time. Sometimes, there are cases that we are not recognized of what we did here when the government is talking about bringing OER to California. Many of us sometimes say, we are already doing this for a while, so we welcome these approaches to the technology. So just to say, there are things that we are doing already here, but at the state level, there are some organizations that are investing a lot on these technologies. Some cases are based on, for example, the use of resources in books. Even there are discussions on, you know, approaches to open education, what is actually a broad philosophy. Examples of, I mean, symptoms of coming from these phenomenons, you can see, not only in the development of new technologies, but discussions in areas like MOOCs, for example. You can, you can open the New York Times every Sunday, you will find an article about MOOCs. But the problem is that sometimes people don't understand exactly what these MOOCs or these open resources applications are. I think it was a month ago, we were in Sacramento, some of the trustees were there, yeah, in January, and we were talking about MOOCs, for example. So all these phenomenons came from the same kind of philosophical approach of the use of technology and how to use this technology pedagogically. In 2008, some people started to get together and say, how we can put these theories together? And a great book that is, actually is open source, you can find it in the MIT Press website, is called "Open Up Education." It's a book that you should actually have in your library. And there are all intellectuals around the country thinking about how we can open education. Because the issues that we are confronting are so severe, and the technology is growing so quickly, that probably a presentation that I give you today in a month will be obsolete. However, there are issues that we are confronting, and we are confronting in the classes. And one of these issues that, that's why Vice Chancellor Orkin asked me to come and talk about, is the price of books. So if you go to the 20 Million Mind website, which is actually 20mm.org, you will find tons of stuff about this. But it's a specific area when they talk about the issue of books and how expensive they are. To give you an example, for example, I teach Spanish 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B. The student has to spend probably between $200 and $300 per class, per semester. So this is, this is the last money for some of our students, students that even can pay, for example, the bar that came from San Francisco to here. So, and they find out, and these people in the 20 Million Mind organization find out that actually, one of the main reasons why students actually drop the university is the price of books. They find out, for example, that between 1986 and 2004, the prices of books rise 186%, which is unbelievable. So this means that if I actually invest all my money that I paid for my house probably 10 years ago, if I could invest that money in books, today we have two houses. This is unbelievable. This is, this type of corruption is, the issue is unbearable. I mean, so we are teachers. We are not, we are not in economics. I don't know how this happened, but we see it every day in the classroom. They also, in this study, they find out that 80% of all textbooks that we use are part of the same conglomerate controlled by the same press. So it means that 80% of all the books that we use are controlled by five companies. They said, for example, that it's so bad that at community colleges, textbooks comprise up to 75% of the total cost of the school, that the total cost of the, what the students pay for education. So just to move quickly on this, an estimate of how much a student pays per year for two semesters is around $1,600. There is another study by the Bureau of State, the Bureau of State Audit that completed in 2008, that they support these ideas. If you actually want to see this, this report, and I will not go in details, you can find it in the URL that you see right there. It's interesting that it said also that the increase of the publishers in voice price or the price that publishers charge retail is actually minimal. It means what actually the, what our bookstores gain from this book is minimal in comparison of what actually the people that create the book gain. This is another chart I can just, sometimes this graphic can be more shocking, the numbers. And you see that from 1998 to 2008, the press went 112%. Going back to the joke of the house, you see the color is actually orange. It went only 325%. So what can we do? Well, we are limited in this area because the only thing that we can offer from the instructors' perspective and the researchers is know how to deal with economic. But we actually can propose a solution that came from the intellectual power, which is actually that there are the OERs. The idea of OERs in books is actually nowhere separated from the idea of open source, of open education. For example, the principle that we use for the learning management system that we use right here today, Muro, is the same concept. I will create an application, or I will create an idea, or an artifact, and I will give this artifact in a way that nobody can own it. We can all use it. Actually, you will give me credit. You will say, Fabian created this part of the application. But I, no one can own that application. And this principle that is not new, this is actually from the beginning of time when the internet was based on Unix, is a principle of cooperation. It's like we are, we are part of humanity. If we don't save each other, we are going to die. That's, it's a very simple thing, sounds very idealistic, but it's very brutally sustained by fact. If I have a person that controls 80% of the resources of the community, the community dies. So when people start to talk about OERs, open educational resources, in general, they are talking about artifacts, videos, ideas that they are offering to the community, and they are not controlled by anyone. Interestingly, in these last two months in Sacramento, they start to talk about legislation and ideas and bills, and actually SB 1052 and then SB 1053 are two examples of this. And I'm not going to go in details on this. I gave Roxanne the language of the bill, and you can actually download it from the website where the agendas are. But in principle, the idea is that the government will support these books, the books will be completely free, students can download it in artifacts like this. For example, I wrote these two examples. This is a candle, and this is, and this is a tablet. This is an Android. Both of them will cost approximately $100. Student can navigate the internet, you can download your book, you keep it. So as I said, actually, this is not new to us. I will show you some examples of what we're doing right here. In Berkeley, I mean, Berkeley City College, we created a site where we actually will archive all the information that we use for some specific classes. If you see the website and click on student resources, you will see that there are resources for mathematics, English 130. And let me show you the Spanish because it's the one I know better. So you click in there, and you have an archive. So you click in there, and you have an archive of materials that the student can use by chapters. So for example, in the first week, I'm talking about the verb was ser, for example. The student just click here, and I go to a site that actually offer materials on that subject. This material is completely free, costs nothing, we can download it, we can print it, it's for everyone. Even you can actually, I'm sorry?
Is there some audio?
Oh, yeah, let me show you some of the, let's see if I can go back. Since we want to mess with the Chancellor now, let me show you something that we are doing with another class, Spanish 38, which is a literature course. And in this course, we decided this semester, that we are going to offer the course free to anyone in the planet that won't actually follow it. So if you click here, for example, you can see videos from writers. We don't have audio here. Yeah, I got it. Yeah, I got it. It's in Spanish, because the class is in Spanish. But we actually, we don't only use material that is available on the internet, we create the material. For example, there's one short story that we are reading about Puerto Rico, and so we want to interview people about, you know, this island in the Caribbean. So suddenly, wow, we have a Chancellor who is from Puerto Rico. So what I do, took a camera, cornered the Chancellor, and asked, could you give me 20 minutes to talk about how would your life in New York? I'm not giving this to just be nice with the Chancellor, but just as a good example, something that we are doing right here. So I will go and interview him. And we will go and talk about, you know, his life in New York. So for our, this is extremely important, because it's not Anyway, poor Chancellor, I don't want to put him on. But, but for us, this is, this is, this doesn't, this is not something the leaders, suddenly I have the chance, I want to do a video, but this is actually the spirit of OER. When, when you buy something, we said in regular classes, what you do is you buy the video. In OERs, you create the video. You know, in, in regular classes, like, for example, with MOOCs, what we call the X MOOCs, that are more classic, like what Coursera is doing, the instructor creates a video for the student. But in the C MOOCs, what is actually closest to open education, actually, the students actually do the video. And the instructor loses a little of the control of what is going on. And that's good, otherwise we keep doing the same thing. But for example, this video, I'm reading a short story about Puerto Rico, and I want more material about this short story, I want to interview someone, so I interview the Chancellor, I have the video, I put it on YouTube, this is completely free, anyone in the planet can use it. So that's how we are creating these artifacts. And we know that these artifacts will replace books in the show, I mean, I'm talking about a couple of years in the future. The idea of the book like this is dead. These books printed like this are obsolete, they are already obsolete. Okay? And we are paying insane amount of money for something that is, is too primitive. So, so when, when you, when you have all these artifacts, and you want to put it together for a class, you're not only helping your students, first of all, they don't pay anything, it's completely free, in general, the story is free, it's already on the internet, so they can download it. If they want to print it, that's fine, they put it in a USB file like this, go anywhere, for $15 they have the print. But not only have they have the print, they have the video, they have the classes. For example, every single class that we teach, we record the class. And we have to be in compliance with, you know, many different elements, like, for example, they have to be captured, if there is a visual component, it has to be described for students with special needs, that, for example, cannot see or hear, but it has to be there. This is not that simple, it's not just record a video and put it online. But for example, if I, if I go to my class tomorrow, I'm not the only, I'm showing the stuff that I have, doesn't mean I'm the only one. There are several instructors here in the district that are already doing it. But if I'm talking, for example, about this writer Juan Rulfo, who is a Mexican writer, I record the class. So I'm recording the class, and this is kind of brutally, this is what it is. But when it's done, this is available. Next semester, we don't have to buy books. And actually, if the student, for example, is sick, cannot come to class, they can actually hear the class from home. So this is not the future, this is the past, this is already going on for quite some time. The only problem sometime we have is that the point instructor have to teach 15 units, go home and correct for another 15 hours, and they don't have the time to do this. So what we see from Sacramento, some institutions, sometimes institutions come to support these ideas, with resources, I don't know, this is something that has to be discussed. But, but the idea is already there, we don't need the books. We, we could actually avoid this idea that the student has to pay $2,000 per year to buy books. So absolutely, we don't need that, that's ridiculous. I'm not using my 38, I don't know, use this book since 2006. I'm not the only one, there are many instructors like that. Some subjects actually are much more complicated, for example, in languages is more difficult, you need specific book, well, we can create this book. And when we create it, anyone in the planet can use it. In Sacramento, with this two legislation, they are trying to create a, what we call a free library. For somebody, we'll get this group together and work on a book on physics, for example. When that book is done, it's available. We cannot impose this to the instructor, I cannot go to the department and say, use this book. No, that's not going to be free, the instructor don't want to use it, no. But maybe, maybe they will. And very soon, there will be so much material available, that we don't have to use this, this stuff anymore. And that's, I conclude with my part, if you have any question. No question?
Questions, trustee Abel, and then we'll go to trustee Brown.
So is, can you tell us what percentage of our faculty have actually embraced sort of this policy of no textbooks and kind of going to OERs?
We don't know, we don't know. I don't have a number.
You don't have a number?
We could actually do an assessment and find out who is doing it. In general, the instructor will just decide it by, for example, I know someone in Laney that has his own book, it's a PDF file, the student can download it. We are doing languages, mathematics in some areas, but I don't have a number.
And, and what, what institutionally is the district doing, or is it by college, to sort of support this type of technology? Because I see this as not only is it good for students, but actual recording of classes, and I don't know, there may be something in the contract there with this stuff, but the recording of lectures, I think, would be as a staff development tool for other professors to maybe, who are teaching the same subject area, to kind of see and kind of get feedback from one another as to how they're, they're doing on a particular subject. You know, I'm not sure if that's being employed at this point in the district, but if, you know, we know that students self-select instructors in many ways, and I'm wondering if this sort of, these tools can be used as a way of, for staff development.
Sure. Actually, there are, we have to be careful, there are some precautions, for example, I cannot take a camera and record my class. It's actually an issue of privacy. I don't want to put the students on, on the internet, you know, it's kind of wild. However, for example, with the audio, it's different, because the audio
Or just with audio?
That's right. Recording the audio, nobody can identify who is talking, but actually, in my case, I'm putting myself as, you know, as a speaker. But if the student asks a question, the student is not identified. These are all little details. But for example, a similar concept that you're often about recording is that the, the technology that we have in the, in the classroom right now, it will allow, for example, if someone is teaching at Laney, and someone is teaching at BCC, they can talk to each other through video conferencing. So then that video could be recorded. But, but this is something that we can, I cannot give an opinion about that, it has to be the decision of the instructor, there are law and stuff that have to be assessed, and I don't know.
Well, what, sort of tangentially to that, educational technology is sort of seeping in and sort of starting to appear in various places, so it may not just be the entire textbook is, suddenly becomes faculty-generated or faculty and student-generated, but for example, in the math area, some of these companies that are offering what are called MOOCs, Massive Open Online Courses, that we've talked about before, are free, and some, like Coursera, maybe are a little bit controversial, but at the moment, you can go on these websites and have free access to rather sophisticated software for problem solving. So I've been, my office has been recommending that, and I think some faculty members at various campuses, I know at Merit for sure, have students who go to these other websites to have supplemental learning resources that aren't part of their textbooks, that are free, in which they can interactively solve math problems. The Khan Academy is another example of that, where I know some faculty at Laney send their students to the Khan Academy, you can just go to KhanAcademy.org, I guess, and there's just a wealth of problems and software that allows you to solve problems into, in not just math, but in other sciences and also in humanities. And so these technologies are sort of seeping in to the traditional place where you would have to go to textbooks and do problem, solve problems and do problem sets, and you get free explanatory material as well. And there, there are also other resources that, for example, just social networks like Facebook and YouTube, there's a faculty member at Aloney who came out here to give a talk, who uses Facebook groups to start discussions and do things with students interactively that maybe used to be restricted to faculty sitting in a classroom using a textbook. So there are these new technologies are just sort of coming in and starting maybe to erode the traditional textbook as learning resources.
I just wanted to just say that I know that, I think it was the Academic Center president that gave us some information, or maybe it was Berkeley City College, about contextualized learning, and how that's been shown to improve our student success rates. So I hope that's, that's incorporated into here also. But one of the things that I, I see that we need to start moving towards, and I'm not sure if the colleges are planning for this, but K through 12 is moving towards common core, common core standards in language arts and mathematics and other areas. And so I know that for us, and there's going to be a technology component based to those common core standards, how is that going to impact us at the colleges? What are we doing to prepare ourselves for, for those new standards? And how are we sort of integrating with, with those new requirements down the pipeline? I don't think those are questions you can answer right now, but those are questions more for, for the institution.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Meredith.
Wanted to thank you for your presentation, and also thank you for putting, representing Peralta at the convention in Sacramento in January on this very topic. And my question, one of the things that we were struggling with at the seminar in Sacramento was the timing and how to support the development of these materials, so that they can relieve that economic burden that's placed on students by the cost of the books. And I'm wondering, we were not quite sure then, because the legislative calendar had begun for, in January, and we, or with the laws that were being passed, and we weren't quite sure what the, what the rollout looked like, and we were also going through some of the legal issues that, with copyright and with ownership and that sort of thing. And I was wondering if you had any more information on how that forecast looks?
Well, actually, the result of that discussion is the CSB 1053 and 52. The SB, I'm sorry, the SB 1052 and 53 is a way from Sacramento to trying to support this idea. However, I think the technology going so fast, that, that the way that we actually govern our ser is not going at the same velocity. So for example, if we have, we want a solution for this, we get together, we go to these conferences, but when, when you get to a bill or something, the technology really moved away from us. And it's going so quickly. The example of, we were talking about MOOCs, and they get heated up, because the person that was at our side was from Apple. And it was, I was kind of knowing more, but when we're talking about research, we want to move companies away from.
Right.
And she was trying to offer these applications, she, they would not do this complicated presentation, she will give you a beautiful presentation with a perfect accent and nice pictures, and we said, this is the solution right here, you buy it. We are like, no, life is not like that. It's complicated, it's going so fast. So, but, but I will, I will explore in the idea, for example, for the MOOCs. When people are saying that MOOCs will replace classes, the same thing that the book, I don't trust that. MOOCs are not classes. But they are great OERs. So we will not have one bullets, silver bullet for everything, but it will be a little bit from everywhere. And in 10 years, things will be so different, that the conversation that we have today will be obsolete. That's my, I'm sorry, it's a little catastrophic, but that, I think that's what, what are we seeing?
Mr. President? And trustee Withrow?
I'd like to segue from what trustee Guillen talked about in terms of the degree we've penetrated the market, if you will. Some of us aren't as patient as we probably should be. How do we communicate to the students, the prospective students, that they can take a section that is, has a book that can be downloaded off of the open domain onto their Kindle? How do, how do they know about that?
It will be directly from the instructor to the student. That's how we, we don't do it massively. I'm not going, for example, to all the classes and said, all these classes, we'll go and download this material. We do a one-on-one with instructor. So for example, they show up to my class, and I said
So the student has to, the student has to go around and inventory?
No, no, they came to the class, and we said, you will go, at the district, we already have a learning management system that give a virtual classroom to every single class. So for example, if you get to my class, you will have an ID, a number, and a password. So you will log in in your share, what we call, and in that share will be just the instructor and the students. And in that place, there are explanations for what you should do. This is the universal, every single student that we have at the district have access to Mudo. This is our learning management system. In that, the material is inside of that share. So they don't have to go around and get a link from there, from here. In the same share, all the material is in there.
Okay. We also have a website, that, two websites, one at Berkeley City College, and then the district, on the district websites, we have this website, which is web.peralta.edu/or, where we can promote open source or open educational resource materials, and let students know in advance where such, which classes have such opportunities.
Which sections?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And that's what, that's something we're planning to do. And another, just a sort of a related comment, the whole notion of authorship is changing, and I think there's going to be a critical mass sometime soon. A number of, a number of years ago, I wrote a statistics textbook for a publisher, and it was a year-long project, and took an enormous amount of work, and it wasn't particularly rewarding, and I didn't expect it to be in the monetary sense. It was satisfying from an academic perspective, but the point is, it was a huge project, and it took an entire year. Few years ago, former colleague Phil Stark, who's now the chair of the Statistics Department at UC Berkeley, wrote a free textbook that's online on the UC Berkeley website, that's a statistics textbook, that also took about two years to do. But now, with the new technologies, you can go in and put up on a blog or a website, a chapter, a set of problems, some ideas, and the whole open a chapter, a set of problems, some ideas, and the whole open source or open educational resource concept or paradigm means that a lot of different colleagues in a department or across colleges can participate in writing a book, but it does, it isn't a huge project anymore. It'll just be things that are pieced together, such as what Fabian was talking about, more in audio and video, but it can be done in text as well, in which you have these artifacts that get pieced together into a book. So, I think that soon, one of the things that's going to change the whole publishing industry is just the availability of technology to allow large communities of authors to put together a, a textbook.
Yeah, actually, there is another, maybe it sounds confusing, because in the past, when you navigate the internet, you have to go and find stuff. For example, I want to know what is going on in Europe. So you go in every single newspaper. That way of navigating is gone. We use what we call syndication now. You will have an application in your computer, in your iPhone, and it will bring stuff from many different places, and will look like a book, will be like just one newspaper. We use the same technology for the class. The students, they have to go and check this video there and there. Well, Chancellor Orkin was talking about in this website, this website actually is not for a student, this is for an instructor. For example, I'm teaching Spanish one A, I check, I'm looking for material about this specific topic, I click right here, and suddenly I will have a database, that we created, actually this is our own database, and this has thousands of links to material. So the instructor will go and search, and say, for example, "I want something in French", click right here, and immediately you see all the links that they are related to French. So the instructor clicking there, see the material, this is fantastic. Copy the link, go to your share, where the students, actually, it's like a small community, it's like a Facebook, and you put the link right there, and said, "This will help you with this topic." This technology is growing very quickly. It will be so powerful pretty soon, that you will have it in your phone, you will be actually driving and stopping the red light and open your phone, and just start to put links together, and that will be the class. That's why we're saying the technology is growing so quickly, that we don't know what is going to happen. But we already start to see that this can actually replace books, and that's what we call OERs.
Yeah, trustee Guillen.
I, I love books, still have many of my textbooks from college, and there's nothing that replaces the flapping of pages and, and kind of eardogging them and whatnot, but at the same time, I think it would be a worthy goal of the district to say, or to at least have one or a few programs that we can matriculate students through without having to buy a textbook. You know, what would it look like for us, for Peralta, to be able to offer transfer to whatever CSU or, in line with, I forget the bill number, in line with some of the transfer bills that have been introduced recently, but to say that, you know, if you want to be an English major, or you want to be a psychology major, you can do that here, and guess what? You can do it all online, and you don't have to pay for any books. That would be amazing, a revolutionary thing for us to try to establish that, that goal as a district.
Okay, I, I would like to make, first of all, thank you for the presentation, it's very illuminating, and having this kind of concrete look at what's going on is much better than just an oral report. Watching your program, your Spanish program, I think, was, was very, as I said, illuminating. When I, earlier, preparing for the meeting, I did go on the site, the connection kind of fiddled around there and say, "What the hell's here?", and I downloaded a book, just to see how long it takes and so on, and it was Barbara Ilowski's Statistics for English Majors and Other Non-Mathematical People. And, so I have a couple of questions, it's, it's a handsome book, it's got a lot of stuff in it. How does Barbara get compensated for all the work that she put into it?
She's not looking for any compensation, we do it for, just her people.
I see.
It sounds, it sounds weird in this kind of society, but there are people that spend hours and hours producing this stuff, and there were nothing, and they are completely anonymous. Many of them are completely anonymous. And many people here in the, in the district, actually, I'm doing this since ever, we working with applications. This is, this is the origin, the origin of Unix. That's while Berkeley created the component, I mean, the operating system that sustained the internet today, it was in a basement with people that they don't want anything. Yeah, they use stock and, and they are not looking for money, they just give it to humanity. That, it should not be revolutionary. It is, yeah.
Well, thank you very much, I do, one of the, I downloaded it as a PDF, so I was able to underline things and make notes to myself as it's going along, which was great, because it's not that easy to do it on some of the other programs coming that you, when you purchase a book from Amazon or something like that.
That's why you can use it in Android, or you can print it if you want.
Yes, of course I could print it, but Roxanne won't give me enough paper to print those books. I had one last comment on it, this morning, in this morning's, a New York Times was an article on another advancement in online books, and that is, that one of the major companies has come out with software that will allow the teacher to see and determine exactly when the student opened the book, and which sections he read, and the degree to which he either underlined or made notes to himself. Now, it's scary, it's like a Big Brother, but then, on the other hand, as a teacher, if a student is failing, I'd like to know why, is it me, is it the book, is it that he's not working hard, or whatever? So what are your views on something like this?
Well, actually, we already doing this with in Moodle, when the student login, we know what time the student login, what application he saw, but we use it with, with compassion and kindness, I'm not using it to, to, but if the students, for example, ask me, "I don't understand this specific topic," you go on there, because the student didn't log into the site, so that's why, so you can give a better advice. But we already doing this for quite some time. The instructor knows everything, how many times the student login in this, in the, in the system, everything.
So, can, can we get an application that allow me, as the president of the board, to determine how frequently trustee Riley, for example, opened up all the documents?
If you give us the resources, definitely, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a question from Brian.
Yeah, I just went through passport and looked up one of your classes, the Latin American Literature class, but on the, on the bottom where it says textbooks required, it just says textbooks to be determined. So as a student, how would I know going in that I would need a computer to be able to even take this class?
You don't, in my case, you don't, you need a computer, because you can actually print it if you want. When you came, for example, the stu-, first of all, I, we do an assessment, when the students show up, we say, "How many, if you have an application," many students use even fonts to read it. But in case that you say, "I don't have a computer," or "I don't know how to use a computer," or "I hate the computer," we will say, "That's very easy, you just go to the copy center on the corner and print it." So what I do at the beginning of the semester, I take that PDF file and I send it to that store, and several stores, by email, so it's there waiting. So the student can go and just, I think it's fifteen dollars for the book. Furthermore, if he doesn't want to do that, or she doesn't want to do that, she, he, he or she can go to the library and download it, or, that's why it's a determine, will be extremely complicated to put in passbook. So, but you know what, we actually even print it from our own pocket for the students. It, it will not be the first time that the students show up and say, "I cannot even print this." So we go to the basement, we print it for them. It, it, it would not surprise me, I'm not the only one, that, that's what we do.
Thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate your work.
President, I would like, I would like to thank Dr. Banga for his presentation, I also like to make a final comment, so you know that if I'd have known that the video he took of me was going to be seen by anyone on the planet, I'm not sure I would have conceded to that. And then, the comment made by trustee Guillen with regards to the Common Core standards, we know that the K-12 system is realizing that in their Common Core, what they're doing is actually preparing students for college, and they're trying to align their curriculum to what we do at, at, at the college level, whether it's the community colleges or the university system, as we have been aware for many years, that at least sixty percent of the students coming to our universities and community colleges are unprepared for college-level work, and the Common Core initiative is to try to close that gap. Thank you.
Thank you very much, chancellor. And with that, we proceed to the, and I believe we have some items that are going to be, or that have been pulled, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. President, item number eleven has been requested to be pulled for clarification.
All right.
Item number eleven is contract approval for lifelong medical care at Merritt College, and that was requested by trustee Handy.
And also, item number nine, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And with those items being pulled for discussion purposes, I understand-
Move approval.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? Thank you. We proceed then to item number nine first.
Thank you, Mr. President, I wanted to just pull item number nine, which is resolution of the Peralta Colleges endorsing Veg Week, and I recently saw a movie called Four Gover Knives, which, oh, we need a motion, sorry. Can we have a motion for approval?
I'll move it.
All right, there's a motion, second discussion.
Anyhow, I just wanted to read a little bit about the, just about the resolution, what it says is that the Peralta Colleges endorse and support Veg Week in Oakland here, which is April, April twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, and we're asking people to be vegetarian, not eat meat during that week. Oakland Unified currently practices Meatless Mondays each week to introduce students to healthy vegetarian options and the benefits to the environment. Here at Peralta, we've established the Peralta Wellness Center to try to instill in our students the, the need for optimal physical, mental health, well-being, and how that impacts our student success. But also that the American Dietetic Association recognizes the, that reduced meat consumption decreases the risk of various health problems, stating scientific data suggests positive relationship between vegetarian diet and reduced risk for several chronic degenerative diseases and conditions, including obesity, hypertension, diabetes, and some types of castor. And what this resolution says is that we endorse and support Oakland Veg Week from April twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, and encourages student, staff, and faculty to participate in Veg, in Veg Week, and encourages our culinary arts program, restaurants on campuses, and food suppliers to provide vegetarian options and educational materials in recognition of this week.
Thank you very much. There is a motion on the floor to accept this resolution, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Abstentions? Thank you, motion passes, and now we proceed to item number eleven, and I believe that trustee Handy has some questions.
Yes, the way it's written, it's hard for me to un-
I'd like to move to approve item number eleven.
Sorry.
Okay, discussion, proceed.
All right.
And once again, for those just listening in, it's contract with lifelong medical care for mental health services at Merritt College.
Right, I'm trying to understand this, it says in the original contract with Asian Health Services, they were responsible for subcontracting with community agencies. In the end, it says that now Peralta will do the subcontracting, but what I'm not understanding is this is a new contract? Yeah, I'm not really understanding, I've read it like five times, and I'm still not clear what it is that you're asking us for.
Right, so this was actually, Dr. Ng is still overseeing student health services, but this is actually, the way this is written, I'm not quite sure it was written, it was written this way either, but Peralta will still be doing what it's been doing and subcontracting out, and this is just another contractor in addition to Asian Health Services. So it's just part of the same, all of the, I think the way it has been set up with mental health services, all of the colleges have mental health service capabilities on their campuses, and Merritt needed a, a new contract.
Okay, so now, so lifelong is now going to be providing the mental health services.
To Merritt.
And, but, but Asian Mental Health is still the contractor for our Student Health Services Clinic at Laney.
That is correct, that is correct.
Okay, it just wasn't clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
I believe that concludes all of the items, active items on the agenda, and with that, I will proceed, do we have any announcements?
Just briefly, Mr. President, the next meeting of the Board of Trustees takes place on April twenty-third, same bat time, same bat channel, and the board, again, would like to extend our well wishes to our colleague and friend, trustee Gonzalez-Gyan, who is in the hospital. And that concludes the announcements for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, and that concludes the meeting.